May I have your attention, please? We'd like to welcome you to the April the 24th, 2014 Planning Commission. On our agenda, we will go by our agenda today. If you want a copy of the agenda and you don't have one, you can pick one up out in the foyer. On the agenda, if you turn to the back side of your front page of your agenda sheet, you will find the hearing policies and procedures. If you're not familiar with those, you may want to familiar yourself with those. I'd like to ask everyone also, if you have your cell phones. When you say "cell phones" and "pages," I don't know if people say "pages" or not, but you might want to silence it or put it on vibrate so don't disrupt the hearing. With that, we'll move right into our agenda. Also, if you want to speak in protest or for application or in protest or the application, you can fill out a request so you can be heard and turn it in. And you can pick up one of the slips out at the desk out in the foyer. With that, we'll go right into our agenda. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes.
May I have approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 10th. Cast your votes. I'll be Yoko today. The next item will be, we'll hear of our continuance request.
Okay, we have one uncontested request. It's item B-25, which is SP-468 to defer to May 22nd.
Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this item?
Will be uncontested.
We have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. Okay, thank you.
We have seven new requests. Item B-9, which is SPO-D-763 to defer to May 8th. Item B-17, PC-10369 to defer to May 8th. Item B-18, C-6539 to defer to July 10th. Item B-19, PC-10364 to defer to May 22nd. Item B-20, SPO-D-762 to defer to May 8th. Item B-23, PUD-1529 deferred to May 8th. And item B-24, C-6586 to defer to May 8th.
Do we have anyone that's here who would like to speak to these additional continuances? If not...
I'll move the new continuances, please.
I do have one to add. David Box, 522 Call Cord. Item number 14 is a special permit for a telecommunications tower. My client has been in the process of trying to co-locate on a tower for some three years, and we have a situation where an individual owns a small strip of land surrounding that tower and has essentially held us hostage for three years. As of late last night, the individual believes that he can now come to terms with a deal to allow us tower co-location. So we would ask for a continuance to May 22nd to make one last attempt at our three-year process.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other continuance requests at this time?
Hi, Preston Stinson, 2805 Northeast 133rd Street. I'm representing the protesters on item B-10. We'd like to request a continuance on that. We previously asked the applicant to continue it, and they never got back to us, so...
Is that clear?
Donald B. Navard, 4800 North Lincoln Boulevard, representing the applicant. We have met with Mr. Stinson, and we don't see any reason to request a continuance at this time.
Could you come back up, please? Could you share with us why you're requesting this continuance? Have you met with the applicant already?
Well, we haven't...we've never met with the applicant. We've had several phone conversations with the applicant. And the last time...the last phone conversation we had was, we had this kind of...you know, the first notice we had of this was the radius report notification that we got. We never were contacted before this or anything else. So we asked for some more time to be able to sit down with them and work out in detail some of the things that they told us they might be willing to do. But, you know, if they weren't willing to defer it, then we told them we were going to show up here and protest and see if we could get done here. So the last I heard was, "We'll get back with our partners, and we'll let you know." And then I never heard anything else.
And are you representing a community group?
Yeah, it's our neighborhood association. We've got quite a few people here that have...some have signed up to speak, and I think there's 18 letters in.
Now I'm unclear. You say you've met, you say you haven't. So let's clear the air. We've either had a meeting or we haven't.
This is Mr. Greg Jones, who is with the developer.
My name's Greg Jones, and I'm with Teal Creek. I have spoken several times with Preston. We have not met, but we intend to be good neighbors with Preston, even though we have a disagreement here. We have made this application. We have our setbacks. We're given a 50-foot setback. We have a large...we have a three-story building that we've placed 400 feet away from their property line.
You're kind of getting into the application.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're into it.
I might suggest that if your intention is to be good neighbors now, it'd be a good time to start. Maybe you'd want to take a continuance, meet with the neighborhood association. Clearly, they are concerned and have questions you may be able to issue...answer and issues you may be able to address.
I don't know that we'll be able to meet their demands, ma'am.
You won't unless you sit down and talk to them, certainly.
That's true.
I would like to really encourage you to continue this. It's not unusual for us to do this, continuing the application to give both parties the opportunity to try to work through those issues. You may not be able to solve all of them, but you may be able to come to some type of middle ground where you can come up with a good workable solution. I would like to see it continued for a couple of weeks, at least give you the opportunity. Initially, I thought you had met with them and couldn't resolve it, but telephone conversation sometimes is...you don't get things accomplished as sitting down across the table and looking at it.
Mr. Chairman, I've just reviewing the application as it was and then reviewing the protest letters and what they were saying. I had some doubts about the application anyway, and if you just look at the number of the commissioners that are up here right now, when you don't have a personal meeting with a giant amount of people that are really concerned about it, that's kind of a negative for me. So I would suggest that, considering that there's only six of us here, that perhaps a continuance is going to be to your benefit and also to your benefit because you'll have a face-to-face meeting and your guys can express your concerns about this particular rezoning application from agricultural to very dense R4 zoning. That's my comment, and I would recommend that you kind of save.
Thank you. One of the concerns we had was that this is a collaboration between Oklahoma Christian University and the developer to develop this property. And we understood they had some timelines. I just conferred with their council who's here, and that timeline can be compensated. So I've talked to my clients, and they're willing to postpone it and meet with the neighborhood. Sure.
And can we get a date? Two weeks is two weeks.
Two weeks is fine.
I think that'd be May the 8th. So we'll continue this two weeks till May 8th.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion on that?
Motion to continue item...the new requests, including items 10 and 14.
We have a motion and a second to continue item...well, first of all, let me back up a little bit. Do we have any more requests or continuances? If not, we'll add two continuances to our others. Can we get a motion for our additional continuances?
Submit.
We have a motion and a second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda would be, as we move into the public hearing, would be the consent docket.
Okay, we have three items on the consent docket today. The first item is CE-880. It's an application to close a portion of the right-of-way for southeast 74th Street. Item two is C-6593, the final plat of Still Meadows Phase III located east of MacArthur Boulevard and south of northwest 164th. And item three is C-6596, the final plat of Williamson Farms Section 6 located west of Meridian and south of southwest 119th.
Do we have anyone here to speak to these items that we just read on the consent docket?
Move the consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. They are approved.
Moving on to items requiring separate vote, item four is item C-6590, the preliminary plat of The Cove at Pleasant Grove located north of Memorial Road and west of Council Road.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll on behalf of the applicant. Well, we've got a preliminary plat for a four-acre tract consisting of 28 single-family lots. It generally conforms to the PUD and zoning as well as subdivision regulations. We're in agreement with all the TEs and would ask for your approval on this application.
Commissioners, do we have any...
May I have approval?
Any questions? Any protesters on this item number four?
No.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number four. That's submitted. Cast your votes. It is approved. Thank you.
Item number five is C-6597, the final plat of Johnson Farms Phase III located north of southwest 44th and east of Mustang Road.
William Peacock with WPM Design Group representing the applicant. This is a final phase of Johnson Farms. It's 36 single-family lots. We do agree with the TEs and would request approval and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any protests on this item? This is the final plat. May I have approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number five. Cast your vote.
Thank you.
Item is approved. Thank you.
Item number six is C-6594, the final plat of Bellas Park Offices located east of Pennsylvania Avenue and south of southwest 119th Street.
Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, Arc Engineering Consultants representing the applicant. We're in agreement with all the TEs, and if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. Ask for approval.
Any protesters on this item?
May I have approval?
We have a motion and a second to approve item number six. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
It's approved.
Item number seven is SP-471. It's an application for a special permit to operate an auto dealership in the C-3 District located at 4325 Northwest 39th Street.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive here on behalf of the applicant. Our application is for an automobile dealership. Our site is currently zoned C-3, and the code requires a special permit for the automobile dealerships. This isn't an area that is prevalent with other auto dealerships. The staff does recommend approval. There are five TEs that we are in agreement with. In my conversations with, I think, a couple of planning commissioners, they asked the question about loudspeakers. My client is in agreement with adding a TE that there will be no loudspeakers. So with that, we would ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Are there any protesters on this application?
May I have approval of the application with the addition of a TE relating to no loudspeakers on the premise?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application as amended. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Application is approved.
Item number eight is SPO-D-761. It's an application to rezone 10-701 North Lockwell from PUD-202 to SPO-D-761.
I'm James Hobie with James Business Service representing the applicant. The applicant has agreed to all of the changes by staff.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit?
The applicant agreed to all of the spud changes.
All the technical evaluations?
Yes.
We have two...okay. Anyhow, protesters on this application? Commissioners, do you have any questions to the applicant?
May I have approval?
We have a motion and a second to approve item number eight. Cast your votes. This item is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items nine and 10 were continued. Item 11 is C-6589, the final plat of Del Norte at Surrey Hills located west of Mustang and south of northwest 122nd Street.
Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll on behalf of the applicant. What we've got is the final plat here for Del Norte. It's 41 duplex lots. It's 82 units on approximately eight acres. There was some confusion early on with whether the streets are to be private. The streets are to be private with public utilities, and we are also relocating an existing sewer line. We'll be in the process of closing and vacating that easement. There were some questions on that in the staff report. Other than that, the plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat. We're in agreement with all the TEs and be happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Any questions of the applicant?
Just our staff report says that the plat generally conforms. Are there specific places where it is not in conformance with the preliminary plat? Is it just the streets that issue?
I think that's the only issue. Staff had any questions on it?
I believe it's just the location of the entry, I believe.
Any other questions? Are there any protests?
May I have approval?
We have a motion and a second to approve item number 11. Cast your votes. This item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is C-6493, the preliminary plat of Waterwood Estates located west of MacArthur Boulevard and south northwest 164th.
Brian Coon with Hewitt Zollers representing the applicant. This project's been leased in your packet for eight times. We're finally here before you. We went to traffic commission on Monday, and the speed limit was reduced so that we now meet our site distance requirements. We agree with all the TEs. There is one, I need a variance on TE. I think it's number two, which is the length of a cul-de-sac. We have nowhere to take it to. To our east is all wetlands and Corps of Engineers problems. South of us, there's no place to stub to. And west, there's no place to stub to. One time, this was like 60 lots. Now it's down to 30. So would request your approval on the variance in the application.
Do we have any questions of the applicant?
May I have variance TE two?
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance on TE number two. Cast your votes. Variance is approved.
Move the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. Cast your votes. This application is approved.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is C-6587, the final plat of Forest Village Estates Section 1 located south of northeast 36th Street and west of Bryant Avenue.
I want to accuse myself of this application.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering on behalf of the applicant. On TE number three, we were requesting a variance because we only had one access point, and seeing that there's no way we can get a variance, we've agreed to modify the plat to go ahead and continue the road on up and connect to Bryant, which would relieve the necessity for the variance. The only other TE...excuse me, that bears mention is TE number five, and I clarified that at the preliminary plat stage. We do intend to build the fence around the outer perimeter. I just don't want to build anywhere we have to pull it back out.
Is there anyone here to speak on this application? Any questions?
No.
Come ahead.
I'm William Malliot, trustee, Forest Park, Ward 4, but I represent all my constituents most of the time. Also, served at least 10 years on the planning commission of Forest Park. So Mr. Williams is familiar with my face and me him. I'm here to ask you just to deny, deny, deny. This is, as you can see...let me look real quick. As you can see in your paperwork, this has been going on since 2004. Then it was okay for to do a retirement kind of village, and we had some debate with that, but that went around. Why he let that expire in 2009, I have no idea. Maybe money, I don't know. Now it's come back up, and let's see. I would say, well, February...in February 27th of this year, he's wanting to do 30 family lots on 9.51 acres, which was 3.15 dwellings per acre. For some reason, now we go into March 27th on your agenda. Developer then was proposing...oh, and by the way, then they changed it, and they want to do moderate and low-income, from what we understand, housing. So then they were going to do 54 duplexes, 27 structures, three single families, which I wouldn't want to have a single-family home on there because there's no place for kids to play, you know? And if you've ever had the biggest yard on a street, you know where everybody's going to come. I'm not really convinced they're used to going to...originally, there were going to be attached garages. Now I think it's just all going to be parking on the street. I saw that they were asking for a variance because there was one entrance because of the high density. So then that density on this particular March 27th, it was at 5.99 dwellings. Then somehow around March 27th, I guess it was deferred to the 10th of April. I guess they didn't want to develop it all at one time, so they have it to...this process, they were separating, having to detention pond, which I guess they would later develop. And this is a problem ongoing through many of these things that I noticed from your staff. It said it wasn't connected, and originally, they had two entrances, knocked it down to one. Like I said, they were going to originally develop almost 10 acres, and now they've broken it up and decided they're going to do 5.3, and then they're probably going to do something else. But you can see on the plan, actually, yeah, originally, it included all that, and now it's getting broken up some more. And I'll try to wrap it up. But now we're at 30, I guess, we're at 37 duplex, 17 structures on 5.3 acres, which now is a density, so we keep going up, at 6.26. And to kind of just wrap this up, there's not people from Forest Park here today because this has been going on since 2004, so we're a little worn out. When this goes before the council, I'm sure there'll be a lot more people, and it may or may not come back to you because I know what it's like when you're on the planning commission, which I was the chair, and then have things brought back. But there is government dwelling down on 36th. You know, it's high density. It's never really worked out well. Then we have the wonderful apartments over there off of I-35 on Classen, just south of 23rd. Well, those have always been wonderful, and that's less...that's probably...well, that's not even a mile away. And then if you go into density, unfortunately, Ward 7 has had a lot of problems with...it was developed a long time ago. And if you go south of 23rd, like down on 19th Street or somewhere in there, those homes are on .16 acres. But at least they have a drive, some of them. At least some of them have garages, and they have a street and they have a neighborhood. This place is...was rezoned. They brought it out of I-1 and I think agricultural, so it's bordered by empty fields, a storage unit, a funeral home, a food distributor, and one residence. So I don't know where these people are going to park, where are they going to play. They're going to be going into Forest Park. They're going to be up and down 30th. We've already discussed...Willa Johnson's been nice enough to give us the go to have our street redone on 30th because it's pretty bad, so that's going to increase the traffic through there. The other thing is Bryant...that part of Bryant's a mess between there and Willa Johnson, you know? But, you know, you work with the county. Between 36th and 23rd is just a disaster, especially through that area. And so it's, you know, it's barely wide enough for two cars, and then it goes off into the ditches. The added traffic, you know, kids playing, being out on the street, then they come over into Forest Park. And if I was to build something that would want to help medium-low-income people, I...there's no park, there's no recreation, there's an interstate. So that's it. So I...I'm here to ask you to deny. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this application? Dwight, would you like to respond?
Yes, sir. And I'd like to point out, this is not a rezoning case. The plat does meet the current zoning, and there are going to be attached garages. They will have a place to park. They're not planning on parking on the roads.
Dwight?
Yes, sir.
In the little area there that's kind of carved out, maybe that's not quite the right way to say that, but on the southern cul-de-sac there, there's common area. Is that going to be a usable common area?
That is where the clubhouse is going to go?
Will there be amenities besides a clubhouse there? I mean, will there be playground equipment or...
We can put some playground equipment on that. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion?
I appreciate the comments of the person that's concerned, but this area is zoned R2 for duplexes, and we have garages, and there's a little playground in the thing. So those two factors that he talked about have been answered, and with the elimination of the variance issue...
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the application.
So is your motion to modify TE 3 to provide the second entrance or just...
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's a motion, second, modifying TE 3 for a second entrance. Cast your votes, please. And obviously, I can't vote twice, so that's better. Thank you, Dwight.
Thank you.
Item 14 has been continued. Item 15 is ABC-806, an application for an ABC-3 overlay of the DBD District located at 914 North Broadway. at 914 North Broadway.
Good afternoon, Tyler Woods, Reduction Theater, on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Any commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Are there any protestors? And you agree with all the teeth, Darren?
Yes, I, I don't, I'm not aware of any, yeah, we're, we're a small theater company, and we run a live theater, and we, we're, we're wanting to sell wine and beer during intermission for our patrons at our concession stand.
What capacity is your theater?
It is one hundred and twenty-five maximum capacity, according to Fire Marshal, one hundred and twenty-five.
Any protestors? I think I asked that. There's no protestors, any questions, or can we get a motion?
My approval?
We have a motion and a second to approve this application. Cast your votes. You are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is ABC 807, an application to rezone for ABC3 overlay at the PUD 1078 District located at 30 Northeast Second Street.
Richard McCowen, City Center Development, Roman numeral two. I'm a little housing guy, so this is my first time ever to bring a ABC3 overlay before you all. Let me tell you a little bit about the project. This is, well, it's the coolest thing I've ever had the pleasure of working on. It's in the corner of Oklahoma Avenue where it dead ends into Second Street, and then there's a little plaza area that's, where the street right-of-way used to be. And it's a very underutilized bit of parkland. It's kind of, it needed some animation. We have two narrow lots down there, and there was a shipping container project that was being worked on two blocks to the north by another developer, and they ended up having a better idea to do something more permanent. And so, the idea of the OKC shipping container project became available for adoption, and we adopted it. And as soon as we did, and word got out that we were looking at doing this, we started kind of putting the word out to a couple of really cool bar and restaurant owners, and some of them got really excited about it. A particular group that I'm still not at liberty to name, but they've been a major anchor in the Renaissance over in the Plaza District, they've been very excited about it. And we've been deep into design development with them. The challenge is, shipping container's eight and a half feet wide, and that's your kitchen. And so, they can't build a big enough kitchen, or I can't build them a big enough kitchen. I think we're at fifty-four seats in the restaurant area, but the kitchen's tiny, it's eight foot by twenty-four feet, or something like that. And they said, look, we're pretty sure we're going to not be able to sell enough food to meet the 51% rule, so we think the best thing to do is to go back and get the ABC3, because we just all want to be, you know, follow, nobody wants to be in trouble with the AB commission, right? So here I am. Now, the other piece, if this were in the downtown business district, which it's surrounded by, and I believe I'm saying that correctly, downtown business district, it would be less of an issue, I believe. Nonetheless, we're within a reasonable context. The other thing about the project is it's, it's ten-year project. We will have to be back in front of the Board of Adjustments ten years from now because of a variance we saw, because of the nature of the metal boxes, they are not in conformance with the PUD, so they gave us a variance that ends in ten years. So, you know, if it, for some reason, goes, goes wrong, and we truly don't believe it will, and we feel like this is going to be, again, like the maraschino cherry, I figured out that's what color red this is, it's like, you know, the cherry on top of the sundae, and it's, it's literally the second-to-last piece of real estate really to be developed along the stretch of Second Street from the railroad tracks all the way over to Russell Perry Boulevard, I believe. So we're excited about it, it's a great project. Again, I, I'm kind of stumbling my way through this, because it's, I'm, I'm new to this type of zoning. The upper floors are office space, and then one of the floors here in the front is still yet to be determined whether it's retail, office, other form of entertainment, we're, it doesn't require any special zoning, it's just, it's, there's no residential use in the, in the project.
Richard, how large is, when we're looking at this, how large is the structure? You're asking for 13,593 feet of ABC.
Yeah.
Is, is that ABC covering just the restaurant area, the whole area? It's hard for me to envision containers and get to 13,000 feet.
Very, very fair. We're aligned around the entire
The property.
border of our, our ownership. The ownership records indicate that we actually go to the center line of the, the parkland area. The intention there would be to have it function a little bit like a sidewalk café, very much like Urban Johnny. If you're by Urban Johnny, you know, any night the Thunder are playing, there's certainly thirty or forty people sitting out in the city's right-of-way legally having drinks and dinner. And so, that was the idea, to be able to stretch that out into this very unutilized parkland space. This isn't like a kids' park, you know, it's like mostly, you know, twenty and thirty-year-old kids living downtown, not, it's not, it's not like little, it's not like we're trying to take alcohol into a playground, is, that's the intention. We can certainly move this line back to just the private enclosed terrace area, if that, if that would help, and we can
We can also certainly define it by the west edge. The idea of having the entire floor
was if we did do catering events in that front shipping container, which is about 1,260 square feet.
But the, the property, the two lots you referred to combined are, are the 13,593?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Richard, I was, that was a similar question I had. So what you want is the whole, the whole lot, the two lots, not just the structures, but the lot themselves?
That's
I was kind of questioning the, I was, I was
It seemed like a good idea when we were filling out the application.
What I was questioning was the, the lower part by the little angle, where it looked like that's grass or some other texture, that's not a solid surface, is that more grass? Is that a grass area?
A second, yes, a secondary project is a complete, complete dog park that takes place in this entire area. And they're all over Texas, these doggy park bars. They have very different liquor laws in Texas than we do. And so, the idea, the gates to the dog park would be on, on the east, the west side, and you know, the idea would be that the grownups that live in the neighborhood could legally walk out there with a beer in their hand. You know, it seemed like a good idea. I'm not saying it is, it's just
I think if this thing were any further south, I would say this is crazy, but given where it is, I really don't have the same kind of concerns about it that I would if we were talking about converting, you know, Edgemere Park into an outdoor alcohol service dog park, you know?
I have a therapy dog, and when we go visit places, sometimes she's kind of stressed when we come back, maybe I could take her
Give her a pop and get her sauced.
Well, well, we've approved a gun show, I mean, a gun range with, you know, drinks, so a dog park, that's easy. I'm curious, Richard, about, are you using shipping containers?
Yeah.
Because I didn't hear that.
Yeah, the, these are, there's seventeen shipping containers stacked up.
Yeah, there, there's a project in, off of the Cereals Road in Santa Fe, they've started using shipping containers for a lot of stuff, and the way you put them together, they really are cool. They're, that's, and if this part of the world, I think that's, it's an, it's an ideal. Is, are there any of those structures in Oklahoma City, shipping containers?
There is one over on Ninth Street, it's got a little retail store in it, very cool, well-done. It's, it's, we're complicating by making it double height, double wide.
Yeah.
And
Now, that's really, that's interesting. But I, I have to say that as far as the dog park with alcohol, that grassy area, I wonder if it wouldn't be prudent to restrict the ABC3 to the outdoor patio area that you're showing on the map there.
Okay.
And then, when it comes time to go to the dog park bar, whatever that is, then come back with that. I don't, I don't know, it just seems like that that's kind of, rather than the whole property.
That was kind of my feel too, Bob. I was kind of, that was my feel too, is let's, let's just contain, just, just keep it within the confines of the building and the paved areas. And that, that outside, and the outside plaza area, and then
Yeah.
when we develop the grassy node, then we'll
Okay.
we'll come back with that.
That part?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. And all the structure.
And all of it.
Yeah.
Right.
Fair enough. I wish I had my Sharpie, I'd make it more
Are there any protests?
Are there any protestors on this side of?
Not going to get a motion. With that modification, I move to approve the application.
I have one comment. There are few developers that come in here that, and this is no slide on them, but I am excited to see continually, when you have come in here to bless us with your presence, it has been something that has been considerably outside the box, no pun intended. This, this truly lives up to what I have come to expect from you personally, professionally, and so with having said that, I will second this. Very kind of thing.
We have a motion and a second to approve this application with the modifications of, that's been outlined by the applicant. If you get with the staff and kind of identify those areas, then we'll have a
Okay.
approved application. Cast your votes, please. Application is approved as modified.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Items seventeen through twenty are continued. Item twenty-one is ABC 804, an application for an ABC2 overlay of the C3 District, Urban Design, and 23rd Street Uptown District, properties located at 730 Northwest 23rd Street.
Hi, my name is Jared Friddell. I live at 4525 North Georgia Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73118. I'm one of the owners of the property in question. As discussed in our last meeting, we have met with the Mesa Park President, David DeWitt, and done sound tests on our rooftop with no walls. We walked around our roof and then back to 22nd Street with a desk recorder. Once you leave our property, the sound is faint and drowned out by street noise. We have a letter from Mr. DeWitt stating that noise is no longer an issue. Sound level drops six decibels every time a distance is doubled. For example, a jackhammer is 100 decibels at three feet away. From where our proposed speakers would be to 22nd Street is 283 feet. So at that rate, the sound level at 22nd Street from a jackhammer would be 61 decibels at 283 feet. And that's in an open-air scenario with no walls. Our design with three walls and a roof over our bar is meant to funnel the noise out towards 23rd Street. We have tried to meet with the other Mesa Park resident who spoke in opposition of us and have not had any luck. However, I did meet with the resident that lives on the southwest corner of 22nd Chertel, and he is very supportive and enthusiastic about a new restaurant opening up that close to his house. We have a lease for thirty parking spots with the opportunity of twenty more. We have also talked to CSL Plasma, who has over eighty spots, and they have agreed to not tow cars if we park there. It's vitally important for us to maintain a healthy relationship with the surrounding neighborhoods, and we feel that we have resolved parking and noise issues, so we're here today to ask for a ABC2 overlay, and if you have any questions, I would love to answer them.
I have, I have one question. I think last time we heard this application, one of the things, one of the concerns was the, the hours that the open-air music would be played.
Right.
Would that go to 2:00 AM? I thought, I thought we wanted to regulate that a little bit, too.
Well, we feel that we've, we've shown that noise won't be an issue.
Even at 2:00 AM in the morning, though?
Yes.
On the outside?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I thought the last time, one of our suggestions was that we obviously couldn't regulate that in a ABC, and we were suggesting that perhaps that they wanted to pursue this application, come back to us in a SPOD form.
Yes.
I don't see that.
We felt that the SPOD would put unprecedented limitations on not only us, but other businesses that would come along 23rd for hours. Ultimately, our hours would be dictated by our patrons. If we don't have people in there from 12:00 to 2:00, then we won't be open until 2:00.
Hi, may I, may I speak as well?
Yes.
I'm Ken Fitzsimmons, I'm here with Jared and Wayne. And one thing that I'd like to point out is that after the meeting, we, we did hear that about the SPD, and we actually met, David, it turned into an accidental meeting afterwards, and we talked to him about it, and David said, I, I don't think a rezone is necessary if we can reach an agreement about how you conduct the business and noise, and that's, when he mentioned the, the detail about the test and so forth, that was with David specifically to address that. And my understanding was after they walked around the property, David was okay with it, and he said, you know, I can't speak on behalf of the neighborhood, he mentioned he would try, but he thought that, that SPOD was not necessary if we'd come up with agreement. They agreed to, you know, have a, an agreement with Mesa or pledge, whatever we want to call it, to maintain off-site parking, to put signage in their restaurant, and to direct people where to park, where this off-site parking would be, and have signage on the parking lots that they have lease agreements for. And also, one of the, one, two of the three people, besides David, there was another gentleman, Leonardo Baez, that David had mentioned was against, but since that meeting, he has said he's, he's okay with the project after he got to know a little bit more about it. So that, that was one of the reasons, and as Jared has mentioned, we just thought that it was not, from a business standpoint, to limit this property when other properties all up and down the street have an ABC without limitations on their, their sales, it just didn't seem like something that was necessary if we could, if the neighborhood, as we'd had in our informal discussions, would be okay with that. And so, that's where we were, that's why we approached it from that direction and didn't pursue the SPOD yet. And there's also, I don't know if it was mentioned, there has been, I think, thirty letters of support for the project, and there's an online signature, I think JJ has it, or I don't know if he forwarded it to you, about nine hundred signatures of people supporting not just this project, but other development along Uptown 23rd to continue the, the plan that was put in place years ago by the, you know, the city and citizens at that time to, to see this through, and we think that this is exactly the kind of thing that, you know, part of, part of 23rd Street, bringing back vibrancy and the activity.
I think, I, I think maybe you have misunderstood. It is not the, it's not for the neighborhood to decide whether you need an SPOD or not, and it was not their suggestion, it was ours. And this is not in any way, shape, or form, any kind of unprecedented limitation on your business or the use of this property. 23rd Street is kind of a sensitive area, it's booming, we want it to boom, we want to support that. I don't think you're hearing from anybody up here that they don't want this business here, or that they don't want it to succeed, but I think we do feel the need to have a certain amount of control over the development of the property, not necessarily just because of your use, but because zoning is forever. So, you know, I, as far as I'm concerned, I would really like to see this back to us in an SPOD if we didn't make that clear before, I think we should make it clearer now.
I have a question for municipal councilor's office, is the agreement that you're referring to, is that enforceable at all? Is there any, I mean, like, they would agree to do something, have a covenant or something? That's what I was saying, there's, this is a piece of paper that has no teeth in it whatsoever, whatever you wanted to say, an SPOD does. An SPOD governs the operation of the facility. Again, I agree with Janice, I'm not one smidgen opposed to the development on Northwest 23rd Street, I think this is really exciting, I think your project is exciting, but, but the concept of having an open, if we grant the ABC2, you can do whatever you want to do. That's, that's, that's the point, you can have loudspeakers, you can have, you know, 2:00 AM, you know, what, whatever you want to do. With an SPOD, you tell us these things that you're going to do, and then you've got to stick to it. That's really where the, that's where the governance comes of what we have to do. Even though there are nine hundred signatures, I would be one of them, in a generic fashion. We, we really support the Twenty-third Street commercial development, yes. But if I'm living on Northwest Twenty-second Street, right behind your facility, on Twenty-first Street, sound travels, and it's two o'clock in the morning and I can't sleep because you're, you're playing whatever there is out there, I just want to know what it is you plan to do. And I think that Nick's comment is what my comment would be, and Janice's. This should be governed by an S-P-U-D as well as any of these other facilities that are going to go into Twenty-third Street that affect either the northern part, you know, that, that neighborhood to the north, and the neighborhood to the south. Mesa Park, Heritage Hills, they've all struggled to really have a significant control over their historical destiny. And to have it interfered with by a strict ABC two, the zoning is there, and you guys do your restaurant and bar on the rooftop. This is open. You know, you've, you've got an open air venue, but without any controls over, over sound, you know, hours of operation, or without any idea of what we're going to do, I really think that it would be to the detriment of certain people that are in the immediate vicinity. It doesn't hurt anybody that's over there, you know, on Class and Nineteenth Street. They don't care. They want Twenty-third Street developed, so do I. But I think that an S-P-U-D, as we requested last time, is really what you need to do.
On the other hand, somebody could make a motion to potentially deny, and the outcome of that would be what? It would go to council?
Mm-hmm.
And you can try your luck there. I, I'm just going to tell you, probably wouldn't recommend it.
You've heard, you've heard the commissioners, some of their feel on it. You want to respond to that, or?
I mean, all the, all the tests that we did with David Dewitt, the Mesa Park President, was to make sure that sound wasn't going to be heard on Twenty-second Street. And we proved that to him. We proved it to the resident that lives on the southwest corner of Twenty-second Street. He was there while we did the noise test. We were talking to him. He couldn't hear a thing.
Part, part of what you're basing that on is your design for this facility. But that is not in any way guaranteed, and God forbid your business doesn't succeed, and the next people come along and they have ABC two zoning, and absolutely no requirement that they have walls or a roof, or anything else to control the level of noise that they're making. If you will put what you want to do into an S-P-U-D, I think you will find that it is not a limitation on your business, but that it provides a level of comfort to the planning commission, that you'll have a much greater chance of success doing what you want to do.
So this S-P-U-D would be for hours or noise?
It may, it may have a lot of different aspects to it. The staff will work with you on that. And you'll be able to, it may address the signage, directing people to parking. It may address a lot of different factors. They can walk into that.
Okay.
You know, one thing about it is, as the municipal council said, your agreement, your agreements that you've made, it has any, it has no enforceability to it as far as a zoning case, or as far as going with the land. You know, this goes with the land. So that's one of our major concerns.
But I mean, any new applicant that did take over a building would have to go through ABLE before they could sell any liquor.
They just simply have to be approved by the ABLE commission. Our problem with ABC at the municipal level is that once we grant this ABC, it runs with the land to perpetuity, as long as there is a licensed operator in there. So that's one of the things that Commissioner Powers was alluding to. The next guy can turn it into a truly blaring honky-tonk, and, and we have no say. We've granted the ABC.
My name is Wayne Allen. I live at thirty-seven thirty-two North Chertel. I'm, actually, I'm Jared's partner on this deal. As far as the, the noise is concerned, there are, there are other noise ordinances as far as certain volumes. Would the S-P-D be considered? Would that be like a lower, would we be talking about a lower level of noise allowed, like, I guess, lower than right now the laws say, or?
Whatever the acceptable, acceptable levels and those type of things, that would be spelled out in your S-P-U-D, and then we can have a forcibility of those items. So whatever you work out with the staff, that's, that would become the S-P-U-D.
And that was my main, that was, I guess that's kind of what I was asking, is, there already, there are rules governing how loud you could be at this point.
My suggestion to you would be to work with staff to make sure that the decibel levels were well below what's considered to be annoying or obnoxious, or whatever in the ordinance. If I was doing the S-P-U-D, I would also address hours of operations for the music. I would also address signage you were discussing about how you're going to do the signage, directing to which parking lots, that sort of thing. It gives you the opportunity to put all those things in there and let us, let us see them. Where you are today is, the way I see it is a crossroads. I, I don't see the votes here today to approve your application in its present form. If you wanted to go forward today, you have that option, and you can go to council with our recommendation, which I suspect would be denial at this point. I can't say that, no matter what flavor I get from hearing people. Or if we don't have a consensus, perhaps it would be continued to another, the next meeting. Or you can continue it yourself and come back with a, with an S-P-U-D. But it's entirely up to you guys.
I guess we'd like to ask for continuous then.
Thirty days? Can you do it? Get your S-P-U-D done in thirty days? You work with staff?
May twenty-second?
Before we get a motion, we have three persons that signed up. Two is in support and one is in opposition. Do you guys like to, you understand what we're doing? We're continuing it? Would you still like to speak? Mr. Hughes, is that you?
I'm Mr. Mead.
Mead, I'm sorry.
I first wanted to say just publicly that I do want them to move in. I'm speaking in opposition. I want them to move their restaurant.
Could you give us your name and address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Hugh Mead, eight twenty, northwest Twenty-second Street, Oklahoma City, seven three one zero six. And my wife was home when they did the noise test. We had no issue with the level of noise that they created at that time. My issue is exactly what you've just said, and I just want to reiterate it so that it's understood, is the ABC two overlay permanent? God bless them, may they be there forever. They seem like they're going to be great neighbors. But if they're not, this is my only chance to have ever said anything about it, right? And, and I'm totally fine with an S-P-U-D. And I did fail to follow up with Jared. I met him briefly, and we had a brief conversation after this last meeting at a Twenty-third Street event. And I said I'd get back to him. I did send an email this morning, but I don't know that they got it. I would be fine if the S-P-U-D restricted the hours of operation to, you know, at least eleven o'clock, Sunday through Thursday. And Friday and Saturday, they can stay open until two, right? I mean, I think that's a perfectly reasonable position. I, I feel like they've addressed the parking very well, although they may want to include that. I feel like they've addressed the noise. I feel like they've really tried to be good neighbors, and my point is exactly the point that you guys had about the permanence of this decision.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I would like to say to the applicant, before we decide on the continuance, not to feel like you're getting beat up here. If, if this is not by any means the first S-P-U-D that we've required along Twenty-third Street, and it most certainly will not be the last, so.
Can we get a motion for the continuance?
We have a motion and a second to continue this item to, for thirty days, I believe,
to the May the tenth? Is that right? May the twenty-second meeting. Cash your votes. Item is being continued. Thank you.
Item number twenty-two is PUD fifteen twenty-three. It's an application to rezone fourteen six twenty Mezzaluna Avenue from PUD fourteen eighty-three to PUD fifteen twenty-three.
Bob? Buddy, ever push it? No?
David Box, five two two Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is Will Ralph, who is also with me, and Tim Johnson. This is a, a PUD that is some two years in the making. We have worked a, a long time and worked real hard to, to make this PUD something that was appropriate not only for the area, but this commission, and also the neighbors. The commission might remember, there was a previous application for another apartment developer just north of where, where this site is, that had significant protest on it. One of the, the groups that was protesting that was the Gardens of Blue Quail Ridge HOA. The letter that I've just handed out is a letter of support from that same group. We think that's significant. We think that our, our product is something that's, that's different and better than other applications that have come before you. And Mr. Ralph is going to, to explain those. But I do think it's important to look at why we're here. This is on a portion of PUD twelve eighty-one. Now, I know everyone on the commission is familiar with that PUD. It's been much maligned, and it's now, we think it's, it's broken. With that, what we've done is, in this PUD, one of the concerns was density. If we're allowing apartments here, what's that going to do, the density in twelve eighty-one? Well, what the owners of twelve eighty-one have done, and what we've already filed, is an administrative amendment to reduce the number of units allowed in twelve eighty-one after this application goes through, so the balance of what would be left, by the six hundred units. So that there would not be an increase in density. It's a, it's a net wash. One of the other items that we've dealt with over the last eighteen months is a, a traffic issue. The old PUD twelve eighty-one is a little unclear as to what might have been required. And we were given direction through the TE's that a traffic signal was required at one hundred fiftieth and what's called Sugarloaf. My client is in agreement with that, and that signal will be constructed. So we are in agreement with that, with that TE. I would like to have Mr. Ralph come and address the commission to explain the product that they have, and all the steps that he's gone through over the last eighteen months, to ensure that this is a quality development.
My name is Will Ralph. I'm with Braxton Development, seventeen thirty-five South Nineteenth Avenue, Suite B, Bozeman, Montana, five nine seven one five. As David mentioned, this, this project's about two years in the making, or about eighteen months to two years in the making. We first started out looking at this, this property back in, in the fall of two thousand twelve, understanding it was in a PUD that had a lot of history with, with the city of Oklahoma City. And since that time, we, we had worked forward with the property seller, the city, and neighborhood groups to try to find the best fit and the best product for this neighborhood. We ultimately chose this site within PUD twelve eighty-one for, for a number of reasons. The first being that it's, it's the furthest away from one fiftieth, the furthest away from the single-family development on the north side of one fiftieth, as well as it provides close proximity for pedestrian access to neighborhood, to the surrounding commercial and restaurants within the neighborhood. So we feel like there's a very good synergy possibly, possibility between our property and the surrounding commercial areas, which we think is very important. So with all that in mind, we came forward with a new PUD within the existing PUD twelve eighty-one to try, to try to address our site specifically. I'll tell you a little bit about our, our product. What we intend to develop here is a, is a Class A multifamily community that would include a combination of three-story apartments and what we like to call big houses. The, the three-story apartments with something like this, kind of a garden style, or a residential pattern, well, the, well, the big house is more of a two-story, more luxury type product that has an upstairs and a downstairs, detached garages, and that type of thing. We've, we've put our PUD together to include requirements that would only allow for this type of development as far as construction finishes and, and those types of things. Within our site plan as well, which is shown on the screen up here, we, we're attempting and will provide significant green space. We like to have good pedestrian connectivity within the site. We have, we have dog parks, non-alcoholic dog parks within the site. You know, we, we have garage facilities, that type of thing. And then we also kind of center our site around luxury clubhouses, which include things like, you know, meeting space for the community to gather. They have twenty-four hour fitness centers, resort-style pools, grilling areas, that type of thing, kind of a community gathering area that, that creates a space for our tenants to, to go and to use. So we, we, we take this product, and we also have a, a management company that we work with that would provide twenty-four hour onsite management. They have several maintenance staff members. And we use the combination of, of a long-term relationship with them, along with this quality product. And what we're going to have here is, is a product that's, that's going to push the highest rents in the market, and will be, will be the nicest product in this general area. And because of its proximity to other apartments and the commercial that I mentioned, we feel it's, it's very appropriate for this spot. As David mentioned, we've, we've worked for, for a long time with, with, with city staff, with Lance and JJ, as well as had meetings with Mr. Gales, Mr. Pat Ryan, the city commissioner from our district, to try to understand their concerns and to try to address those appropriately. We did meet with the, the Blue Quail HOA, as David had mentioned, to get support from them for the project, as shown in the letter. In our meetings with Mr. Gales, the two things that, that he brought up, that he was most concerned about, were, were the density, not increasing the density within the underlying PUD twelve eighty-one. And we took that and went to the city and worked with him to get that administrative amendment in place that would not increase the overall density of that entire property, which we feel is, which we feel is, is a good step towards keeping the integrity of that PUD intact. The other thing Mr. Gales had brought up was a possible connection to Quail Springs Mall. We, we're very much in favor of that. We, we feel like it would, would benefit our property. But we did approach the mall, Mr. Nice, who's here along with Ms. Wasso, who's the manager of the mall. They denied the request mostly because of concerns with traffic and maintenance on the private ring road around the mall. They didn't want to add additional traffic to that. So that being said, that, that request was denied. But, but I, I do want to stress that, you know, and Mr. Nice can speak to this, but we don't believe they're opposed to our project, more of just opposed to the connection. And we do pledge to work with them on, on some of their concerns regarding the fence along our common property line, our landscaping buffer, and things of that nature. We also, as David had mentioned, had worked with city staff regarding traffic. Late last week, we learned that, that city traffic department would like to have a signal at one fiftieth and Sugarloaf. We're, we're okay with that, with that TE, and pledge here today to, to put that in. We do feel there's a benefit to our tenants, as well as the surrounding area, for, for safety and, and surrounding street movement reasons. So, so I'll, I'll kind of wrap this up just by saying that I hope, my, my hope here today is that we're not, I don't want to bore you with the details or anything like that, but I wanted to show that with all of these items, that we've spent the last eighteen months working with the city, and with Mr. Gales, and Mr. Ryan, and the commissions, and our neighbors, that I hope that shows how committed we are to doing a quality project here. We're, we're very much invested in providing a good project for Oklahoma City and the northwest Oklahoma City area. We've got significant capital and time resources into this, and we're, we're excited about moving forward with, with the city towards a, towards a quality product. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have for me regarding the project or anything else.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant?
Small one. I just want to... I just want to be sure I understand what I'm looking at here. These things that look like, sorry, Pez dispensers, for lack of a better term, in sort of a cross. There, are those, is that covered parking I'm looking at?
Yeah, those are detached garage buildings, single, they're single-stall garages. Yeah.
Oh, so they're enclosed, it's not just covered parking?
Yeah, they're enclosed garages. But our, the big house property actually has attached garages attached to the units. For the three-story apartment buildings, we provide some additional detached garages that they can use for parking for an additional expense every month.
And will there be any pedestrian connection between your property and the mall?
Um, we, we did ask the mall about that same issue, and we were denied on that as well. Again, coming back to the safety of having residents cross that ring road. We are certainly open to continuing that conversation if they would reconsider their position. Certainly, we'd like to, but we do understand and respect it as well. I mean, it's their road, and we certainly intend to be good neighbors with them and respect them, so...
I would have just kind of a general observation about the connectivity between your project and Quail Springs, and I've read the letter from Feller Snyder and the access either pedestrians or traffic because of their control over that private road. Some years ago, there was a shopping mall called Penn Square. It was right there, and right next to it was Belle Isle Lake. And here's Penn Square, was Bemeri, Belleuf, et cetera. And then before I was on the commission, Nick, you might have been on it, I don't know, but here came a proposal for a shopping, well, big-box shopping place just to the east of Penn Square, including Belle Isle Lake, and they couldn't come to an agreement with connectivity. And there is no connectivity. You go up and around and around and around, and it's the most insane thing that there is. Because you put this unit in that place with Quail Springs, who in the world is going to imagine that, what, 1,000 people that live there aren't going to cross, go something and go across and go into Quail Springs? This is, this is, it's not, it's both of yours doing, General Growth and you guys, because this is not going to stop people from going from there into Quail Springs. And so, just like Penn Square for Walmart, Old Navy, et cetera, for that is, it didn't ever work, and it doesn't work to this day, and it's like putting a Band-Aid on stuff, and it's dangerous, and it really is going, they talk about liability. This is going to be used unless they put up eight-foot stockade fences with concertina barbed wire around it. I would just encourage those folks with General Growth to kind of open their eyes up, get with you. And like your email, Nick, about, somebody has to make that into a road that's accessible to these people, because there's going to be this project and another one and another one, and then you have this giant shopping mall, Quail Springs, right there, just tugging at these people to come there, and they're not, and they're going to be there, and they're going to go. So, that just might, that's my, I have no objection to your project. I think it's a great project, but I think that this idea of you can't get an agreement on pedestrian access or vehicular access into Quail Springs Mall is the same kind of situation that occurred between those two shopping malls, Penn Square and Old Navy and Walmart, that stuff at Belle Isle. That's my comment.
I absolutely agree. I mean, I think it's just absolutely crazy. We would never permit the kind of development that Quail Springs is today.
Yeah.
Without providing for connectivity, if the concern is about liability, engineer around it. I mean, you know, design it so that it, you know, meets those issues and deals with them in a sensible way. It's just the, if you've lived in Oklahoma City for any period of time, you know that there are hundreds of places where you can drive around where you can't get from one business to the business next door, because for years and years and years, people wouldn't share access. And I think, you know, we've made a sea change away from that and into shared access, and it needs to reach everywhere. And while I certainly, as a lawyer, can understand liability concerns, you know, there's a way to deal with that.
That was my point, Janice, of facetiously sending that email. It's somewhat disingenuous, in my opinion, on the part of the mall to say they have two public streets leading in from the east and west into their private property, and they're willing to assume that liability, but they're not willing to assume the liability for a public street running to the north connecting to 150th, when they come to the city during peak times and complain that they have a traffic problem. Well, this would alleviate part of their pressure on May and Penn. So, to me, that's somewhat disingenuous. We can't force that. I am really frustrated with this whole project. I like this concept. This is a good product. I think it's good for our market, healthy for our market, and I support this. But the only way I'm supporting it, and we've, kind of like the last application we had, we suggested to those fellows, they've come back with an SPUD, they didn't, well, we've suggested to the guys in 1281 that they redo their PUD and not carve it up. Their answer to us was to withdraw and let this young man basically do their bidding for them with a very good project. And I support this project, and I will move to approve this project. But I will also say at this point, 1281, from this point forward, needs to be developed exactly as 1281 requires the development, or the whole thing needs to be addressed in one piece. I'm not going to do another piecemeal. I don't care if they go find somebody with a very favorable project or not.
Well, of course, there is another sort of separate and bigger issue there, that, you know, when we have these enormous PUD projects, I wasn't really very involved in 1281 for various reasons, but by their nature, they are speculative just by their size. And without, you know, time limitations on the PUD itself, or on, you know, phasing or whatever, it's really hard for us to have any real control over just, you know, what happens with the process of time. Something doesn't get built, the market changes, and there's an approval in place that's no longer really workable. It is difficult, and, you know, staff-wise and internally, we need to figure out how we're going to deal with that as we move forward on these large projects.
Well, but on this particular PUD, I believe everyone is in agreement that existing PUD has too many constraints in it to be developed the way it is. When the developer came back to us to amend it, all they wanted to do is have a big box that we can put anything from C3 to R4 in here, and we'll let you know. Well, that didn't quite get it, and that's when we suggested that they come back. They have chosen not to. And so, I guess what I'm saying is, today, I'm for approving this application, but not another one until we see a better 1281.
Let me confirm what you just said. I agree completely, because you just, my heels are in the sand on any further intrusion of 1281 unless they come back and say, okay, we're going to change the thing, because, and I likewise, I'll approve this application. But mark my words, when you get going, and, I mean, you've got these things being built and all da-da-da-da, and right on the horizon, 100 feet away or whatever it is, is Quail Springs Mall, and you have barricades put up, you have, come on, this is just insane that there's not connectivity between what you're doing and what the mall is. I just, I, it's inconceivable, but that's all I have to say, is, you know, 1281 is it or not?
Bob, the only thing we can do on the connectivity is hope that the mall will see there's something to their benefit.
There might be customers in there, you know?
Well, and just the fact that it is, that use, whether it is, you know, engineered and constructed and designed properly or not, the fact that it's not going to stop people from doing it, the fact that that is very foreseeable may mean that they're not really avoiding any liability anyway. I mean, it's not like it would take, you know, a genius to figure out that the people who are going to be living up there are going to be wanting to shop down here, and they're going to find a way across the road.
Of course they are.
Whether it's well-designed and well, you know, adapted for that purpose or not, so...
Kind of like telling water to run uphill.
Yeah.
If I may address TE's real quick, we're in agreement with all but eight. We think eight needs to be deleted because it's handled number nine. Nine deals with the construction of the traffic signal, which we're in agreement with. We did confer with staff, and I believe they agree that TE number eight needs to be deleted.
I have a question while we're on TE's. I would like to maybe strengthen TE seven a little bit. TE seven provides for the administrative amendment, change or lower the density of the, meaning density of Club A1. I understand that letter submitted to the city is waiting approval, so I would expect that to be processed relatively soon. But if we could add to this PUD that no building permits will be issued until that's actually in place, I would like to do that.
Then that's, yeah, we agree. I've already submitted it to staff.
I understand it's been submitted, and it should be processed very quickly, much faster than you can grade land and get past the building permit, so it shouldn't be a problem. But I would like to add that to TE seven.
Sure.
And with that addition, I'd move approval.
Before we vote on it, we have one person signed up. Blaine Nice, I believe it is.
Thank you, Chairman, but I would respectfully withdraw, I think, my request to speak. But I do want to address some things briefly. As Mr. Brimble will tell you, I think a law professor will tell you, don't ask that last question, or if you don't have to speak, don't do so. But in this situation, I'm just opening myself up for this. But I do want you to know, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Ralph have been very pleased to work with in this process. They've contacted us. First of all, Blaine Nice, 100 North Broadway, Oklahoma City, on behalf of General Growth and the mall. And they have worked with us. I understand your concerns. We are not, we are not opposed to continuing to work with them. I will tell you, some of the issues had to do with the previous application that had many other issues, and we tried to work with them, and that just wasn't possible. When they came forward with this, there wasn't, I mean, we've had some time, but we were not able to work through all those things, and there's some practical reasons, as I talked to Mr. Johnson. I know Commissioner Gales feels like that this Mezzaluna Drive would take some of this traffic off the other areas and would help, but there's no traffic study that addresses that. My client doesn't believe the type of traffic that would come through there is the type that's going to stop there, you know, and buy, you know, shop at the mall. And in fact, I think we even, I told staff and even talked to them, that there was a development that if this pad had developed overall like it had previously been intended, and there was a road maybe going through this, going north there, I think that they would be very happy with that. And we're still not opposed to working with them to try to have some connection. We understand, I was in the area of Penn Square the other day, just as you mentioned, and it's frustrating. It certainly is, and I understand your concerns, but I want to go on record that they, the other issues, our letter was not really a letter of protest, just wanted to, you know, address some concerns. They've answered all those. We will continue, to the extent we can, to work with them, make bouts and connection. Just at the present time, we couldn't agree to that. Plus, my client's not the only one that makes that decision. They have some anchors there that have to agree, but I certainly understand the commission's concern and wanted to make that known.
But we want to encourage you to continue to make all efforts you can for the connectivity. It's very important.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are, I believe we had a motion, and we have a second to approve this application as amended.
With the elimination of TE eight.
Yeah. We're amending TE seven, putting some language in TE seven and deleting TE eight. Cash of votes. Application is approved as amended.
Items 23, 24, and 25 are deferred.
That ends our public hearing. We'll move to our next item on our agenda. Planning Commission member committees, anything to report? See, we don't have any. The next item is planning commission members. I would like to make the announcement that the selection of the director for the planning department has been completed, the process has been completed, and we have a new director today in the name of Ms. Aubrey Hammer Tree.
Thank you for the applause. And I'd also like to let you know that my position as assistant director has been filled by Ian Colgan. Happy to have him and happy to have our amazing team and our great planning commission and look forward to it.
Well, thank you and appreciate your appointment. Planning departments.
We do have our capital improvements plan process coming up, and we're trying to schedule a series of meetings for you to review those projects that'll be submitted in the CIP, and we'll be scheduling our first study session on May 22nd. It might take a couple of study sessions to get through all of the department presentations, and you will be getting packets next week or within the next couple of weeks in anticipation of that 22nd, study session on the 22nd.
Do we have anything from development services? Municipal council? Citizens to be heard? If not, other business? Adjourn? Does it move? We are adjourned. Jim, you didn't vote adjourned.